And second, world language and I'm running them at the same time. So the memo seems a little bit repetitive is because I'm working with those teams at the same time. And basically, you know, this is part of our strategic plan to review social studies K eight. Um, world language and also A C P. I have a update valuable later in student achievement committee. Um, but the hope is um, with Katie Glubbe going on maternity leave that we have the social studies curriculum review done by the end of February. Um, which means I'm I'm hopeful to get a kind of a report, a whole report to the student achieving committee on in March. And what you're gonna notice about kind of how I write my report is really a synopsis of everything the committee works on. So it's going to share with you what we learned about research, best practices in the field of social studies. And what we utilize is gonna share with you how we evaluated resources and how did they score? What did we add today in the new standards that came out in twenty eighteen? And then it will also share any data that we evaluated review. It will update you on the team's work looking at the new forward examples and exemplars for the area of social studies. Cause I would remind the board that the new state test in the Ford is going to test the new standards starting this year. And of course, we're not quite aligned yet because we're doing the work right now, but I I continue to think well too thoroughly well with that. And then it will end the report with some recommendations, including any curriculum resources if we feel like we need something new. Along with any other recommendations that the committee has. So that's kind of how most social studies and world language. Um, is in the review process. Um, what I do wanna talk a little bit about is the shifts in social studies. Um, and so I kind of included that document um, in the memo. There are five main instructional shifts. So the old standards were written at grades four, eight and ten. And what they had school districts do is say, this is what we want all kids to know at the end of fourth grade, eighth grade and tenth grade. And school districts had a lot of local decision making about where we wanted to teach it at what grade level. So you would notice there wasn't a typical spoken sequence from a lot of school districts. Um, because the standards just said, you need to do this by the end of fourth grade. We tested in grades four, eight and ten, and that still will remain um, with the new testing. But it was written, um, again, not very grade level specific. So one of the shifts is that K twelve is a progression. So they grade banned in the new standards and said, this is what we're recommending, K two, three, five, six, eight and in high school. So that's quite new. Um, a second major shift that we had is really this idea of inquiry as their instructional framework. That we should be teaching history, like how historians would go about making judgments and how history comes about. So the inquiry arc is very important. Um, and it's the pedagogy that we should be using. And I think I mentioned to the board last month, um, when we were looking at how we teach current events or controversial issues. It's really targeted about this. We want kids to do the thinking. You don't wanna tell them what to think. We wanna tell them how to think things through. And that's all on that first inquiry as an instructional framework. Um, the third big shift, integration across all strands. Um, what that means is social studies is more than just history. So they wanna make sure that at every grade band, we're teaching both geography standards. We're teaching behavioral science standards, all the other social sciences. And that's how they'll be assessed. So um, that's kind of the third one in a great overview. Um, the dynamic balance of skills and content. The new standards also are not going to tell you what kind of history to teach. In very few places do we have some part of where it will be taught. So we know, for example, we have a new state law that goes into effect this year that we're required to teach the Holocaust. So of course, sometimes if it's a state statute, it's telling a particular historical context. But otherwise, the majority of the new standards are really neutral about skills and less about particular history content that we would have taught. So you know, a traditional path that used to be is kind of, and this isn't the modern path, but I'm gonna demonstrate in the old standards. We'd have American history in fifth grade. We'd spend sixth and seventh grade kind of dividing the world and hemispheres. Or look at medieval times sometimes in one grade level and then, you know, do another world history later on. And then eighth grade, we go back to American history. They don't have this tight scope and sequence of what kind of historical perspective you need to take. So school districts have a lot of latitude in kind of what um, what history or what content we're gonna teach there.
Why did they make that one? Do they provide like a framework of why or a decision tree of why they made that decision?
About going away about history, it's because they wanted us to make sure that we're teaching all of the integrative strands. So what you would see is in that spoken sequence, it's very history based, maybe with a little geography and math work in. But it really isn't teaching any economics so much um, or behavioral sciences. So I think it's because they want us to teach more than this history. I would also say like, history's been one area that's had and always um, is still the mindset of um, our state. Which is very local control in nature over what the content is. So if they required a scope and sequence, you know, sometimes they get pushed back from, we don't wanna teach that here. That is important timing stream timelines.
Is there anything that we're planning under me or for the inquiry inquiry based learning approach? Uh, is there anything we're doing to try to make sure that we don't? Bring inherent biases to the questions that we're even asking? So an example would be like in seventh grade, like a couple of weeks ago, when she was actually in school again. My daughter had a question for social studies. They were they were learning about American history and like expansion, industrial revolution kind of stuff. And the question was basically like, give your opinion away the pros and cons of the pros being industrial expansion and you know, who commerce between states. And then the cons being, you know, displacing and everything sort of that. But there's an inherent bias that capitalism is good in that question. Is that?
It's not.
Maybe, I mean, not necessarily.
Um, I can tell you that um, when we're reviewing curriculum, I have a very, I have a very specific sheet. It's many tabs about how they're gonna look at and review their um, resources. Um, to try to minimize any type of biases on either direction. Um, so just to to, you know, do that, I think what I don't know is, is that just the question our staff asked? Or if that was originally into the resource? Because remember, um, from December, the resource is one part of it. And then we develop the curriculum, what we might use and not use from that resource. Um, because all of the resources we get, we will never be able to teach at all. We know that right now, right? Like we never get through all the math units, we never get through all the whatever. We have to make some local decisions about how much of the resources and what are we gonna teach? That's required for all of our staff at that grade level or content team. Because I'd say right now, like, that's where we have to kind of really be better about documenting our curriculum. Um, about what what all of that is. So I don't know on that specific example still.
Well, that was just an example, the illustration when I was trying to.
Yeah, I mean, we are definitely looking to make sure our our resources are, you know, as unbiased friendly on either direction, actually. About however you wanna be politically.
When you talk about resources, are we going to be looking at um, text? Are we looking at like online whatever to buy that are continual paid? And so a different year, you're not getting information that's completely unrelated or won't spiral back around.
Yeah, so I mean, part of that might be curriculum work. For example, we might wanna keep seventh and eighth grade as American history. Um, and then look for us a pretty good scope and sequence um, curriculum case six. Or are the teams talking about that? Or do we wanna change kind of what are we traditionally put through us history? Because there are standards, I mean, clearly civics is one of the strands and there's things that we're gonna teach on the content side. So that's the work of the team, yeah. And they'll be screening a couple of different resources. And again, it's hard for scope and sequence because we don't teach it all. So we'll be deciding probably what we use or not use. So that's kind of the major shifts that you would see that would be different in our old standards and our new social studies standards from twenty eighteen. So is there any question about social studies, other ones, some great ones? Questions, Ron?
No, I'm good.
I just don't wanna forget you.
And there's one more question. How much are we gonna keep reading on platforms like YouTube, which I know, okay?
No, I really, my hope is to get some really strong curricular resources where teachers don't have to spend so much time finding, finding supplemental resources to beef up our core. No, that we would have a strong enough core, that that's not me.
Yeah, that is a great question. So would we have a book or anything for our students to reference instead of just let's put on our slides or?
So we are looking at core resources that may or may not have a core text. It depends. A lot of the companies, the vendor companies are putting a lot on a virtual platform for both the kids. You know what I'm saying? But I mean, like the kid additional of a book would be online.
The older grade levels right now already have a textbook.
Well, in fifth grade, they don't.
Yeah.
I don't know how older, but fifth grade, they don't because we had.
Once they switch to the National Geographic.
They do. And we kind of did our own thing, K through five in the last review, that we created our own from scratch curriculum that find a lot of gaps.
Because that's what we historically did.
Yeah.
So we just came up with our fifth grade class, we, yeah, miss school and they went to the old research.
Yeah.
They learned at school and there wasn't resources inside. The teacher uploaded, so.
Yeah. We're we're looking for a stronger resource all around. Did you wanna say something, Ron?
Yeah, we have National Geographic textbooks for grade five and six. So there are instructional resources that were selected five years ago to really support the fifth grade geography program that we built, just like we did with sixth grade. The fifth grade teachers after year one felt that the text was a little bit too difficult to read. So that's when they pulled back the textbook and just used the supplemental resources and the textbook online. Uh, which was very, which can be leveled and tiered depending on reading level of a child. But um, there are cores, there are core, strong core materials that are available. Um, and supplemental resources that are available. There's the district did supply the teachers with enough to do certain.
So then is there an issue of our teachers not using our resources? I mean, our teachers are wonderful, so I would assume that they want to.
Well, remember I talked about a guaranteed viable curriculum? That's what we want to goal that regardless of who's teaching fifth grade, sixth grade. And our teachers do um, sometimes bring in supplemental resources that another teacher may or may not use. So we'll clean all of that up of what every fifth grader needs to have, regardless of who's their teacher. Anything else on social studies? All right, um, so world language, very similar process. Um, our world language teacher has a student teacher um, this semester. So she's been joining us um, in the review process. So it's kind of nice that he's had someone other than me to talk about world language with. Yay. Um, and the biggest thing that I just wanna note in that memo for the board is really something that Becky seemed with kind of a different schedule that she had this year. Is we probably will be looking at kind of thinking about like, what do we want from our world language program? Like, what's our end goal? And both Becky and I feel like our end goal is that, you know, a student, if they want to, can get through the equivalent of a high school level one. So they could enter Arrowhead High School at Spanish level two, if that's something that they wish to do. So you know, we're really looking at resources for that. What kind of schedule do we need for that? And how can we kind of support that vision that if a kid wants to do that? Because the only way you can get to the advanced placement courses is if you enter at a level two.
So you use the word once, does that imply that we're gonna change what our requirements are for students to pick?
Well, we do have a requirement and part of that will be in the report that they do have to take over a language and they do have some. Uh, you know, we do have to offer it. Um, you know, we do believe it would, I mean, there's a lot of benefits of doing world language, even if you don't stick with that. Um, and if you ask um, anybody, I tell you, a majority of our kids actually learn their English grammar when they learn another language. Um, it's very helpful and robust to that, so.
Also a problem, but that's.
Yeah. So I mean, you know, we're still problem solving because the review's not done, but I'm just kinda telling you what what we're kind of um, looking at the end game for that.
What languages do we offer?
Just Spanish.
You know, there are other languages that students can study as an independent study using, I don't remember what's often with that.
Yeah, so yeah, we do. We're also looking at a language lab that if a kid really, that's what is called like, using an online resource. We do have some students right now that um, might already be forwards in Spanish, honestly, past their level one, that are taking different world languages that we're offering. So you'll see some of that as well, Phil.
So that we reviewing the minutes again, because I know I've spoke with Becky actually a couple of times. Cause up until, and Jake, correct me if I'm wrong, was it two years ago? We switched from it being a lot more minutes in the Spanish, just being seven, eight. And it was more intensive and longer, so they could cover a lot more. Cause I remember her saying she had like a ninety percent success rate for her kids that took the placement test or the Arrowhead testing into Spanish two.
Yeah.
Yes, we're looking at minutes.
So.
Yeah.
And I know she was concerned about that because then when the minutes changed and her case started from like seven, eight to six, eight, and then this year it's five, eight. Um, she was really concerned she would be able to get the same amount of kids that wanted to get as far as they could.
Yeah.
To be able to test in Spanish two, which is when she started offering the booster.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Last year she offered the booster and it was only seventh and eighth grade that had Spanish last year. This year was the addition of sixth as part of the explore wheel that is opposite band or choir in fifth and sixth grade.
Okay.
And you know, you you could be the the student who takes it in the first trimester, or you could be the student takes it in the last trimester. So there's obviously some potential for learning loss from the first semester, from the first trimester till when they were to take it again in sixth grade. So that's one of the things that that's being looked at as well.
Yeah. Awesome questions.
Are we looking at moving world language as an option down to elementary school?
We are not looking at down to resources right now in the world language.
Is there a reason why we're not?
Um, partly because, you know, thinking about um. So when you're thinking about a quality world language program, I can tell you um, who had some, I left Bay where we had some in elementary. Unless you make a huge commitment, like to a very robust world language program. We aren't, we weren't seeing any positive effects on our kids that were taking Spanish in elementary. Partly because they just didn't get enough exposure to it without going on. So you know, the research would support if you really wanna start that young, you know, bilingual, doing it at least minimum three to four times a week. Um, and pretty intensive.
Doesn't that go against what we're doing with them for the fifth and seventh or?
Well, we're, so Lindsay, like that report's not done. So our recommendation hopefully is going to be one to kind of get us to that end game with Spanish one with putting in time and resources to meet that. I'm just answering why you don't do it, because you're either all in on it or or not.
Wasn't the point of the elective thing for fifth and sixth, just if you're interested in it, you can go check it out and see if you like it. Like it was all the other explorer classes, it wasn't necessarily meant to replace or augment the normal seven, eight Spanish program.
I think it's required though, right?
Oh, is it required?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh. There's three, they have, they have a steam class, they have an art class, and they have a Spanish class. Those are the three classes for the three trimesters that are opposite band or choir.
Are we looking into making an elective more in Spanish? So if a family or a kid wants to learn.
We haven't, we haven't really discussed an elective offering for a different world language other than the Spanish or Spanish.
Other than the language lab.
Yeah. They're just gonna keep beating it up some.
Yeah, what we're looking for is we need to create enough time and capacity for Becky to get to that end mark. That's our goal. Um, we're looking at how we, how often we're offering it now and what grade levels. And then again, offering a language lab for students that already do it, maybe some students that, you know, wanna e- explore a different language. Um, maybe for some students, we had, you know, we have a group of students, new students, and we're getting more that are coming in. And they didn't have Spanish before and are starting in the same place. So there's things that we're thinking about with all of that to make sure that they can also have a language experience. So that's really where we're looking at the language ladder. As an option as well to our traditional programming. Anything else on world language? All good questions, I love. Um, okay, uh, the district, I'm just gonna give a quick update on our um, on our dip plan to date. So um, what have we worked on to summer to our, the summer meeting to our other meeting for the district? Um, our multi-level of support district committee met for a full half day during the grading day in that afternoon. And we've been um, working really hard at re- um, designing, providing feedback and learning more about interventions and supports. And the continuum for all learners. Um, we'll be meeting again in March. They gave me lots of feedback, so that's what we've been working on there. We had a professional learning and development day on the twenty fourth. Um, and each of the professional learning days, we've been trying to give our staff some time um, to kind of work on some of the curriculum changes. Cause of course, every teacher here at the intermediate school is teaching a new course at some place. And um, at the primary to really focus in on our small group instructional planning. So they had time for that. Um, our primary staff and our intermediate E L A staff dove into the new writing standards. Um, with Becca and Abby and went into a new resource book for that. And our intermediate staff did have time with our professional developer, our E L L consultant, Laura Howard came in. And um, the primary school had some professional learning last year of how we meet the needs of all of our English language learner students. And Laura came in and did that professional learning with our intermediate staff as we get more and more kids in that have E L L needs. And that was a great professional learning because, tell you the truth, our best strategies for our E L L learners are really good for all kids. Like vocabulary, tier three development, um, some instructional strategies of making sure our graphic organizers are similar. Um, every time we ask kids to use the same staff so they get used to that. That was a good kind of day. Um, and we're getting ready for February fourteenth, which is coming quick. So I'll share what that professional learning looks like if we're in February. So that's kind of the main focus of January.
On the dip plan, I know we talked about this the first time this dip plan was rolled out.
Yeah.
Um, the goal.
Yes.
It's twenty percent. We're not, but I'd like to see that quantified by grade and by class so that we can come back and see if we hit that.
Yeah.
You know, cause I don't, it it's twenty percent of the ones that were underperforming. As I, as I remember the original conversation.
Basic and minimal.
October, was it, is that October, September?
Yeah.
November, November. But can we build out as a, either a supplement to this or in that section? What, what is the number we're trying to improve?
Yeah.
Is it three students, is it eight students? What is that twenty percent of that number?
Yeah, and we can definitely add that for you. And you know, hopefully by our February meeting, um, we are working on the district data wall like dashboard that we wanna track over the next couple of years, how we're doing in progress. So I've been um, working with our key staff members on that. Um, because I want it to be more than just one year or two, Andrew. You know, like, that's pretty immediate difficult because we didn't have it. But I'm trying to develop something that's more long term. I think we have on here like what the percentage was, but what would it be is what I'm hearing you say.
Right, because again, I think what I remember Ron, when Ron discussed it, Ron, correct me if I'm wrong, but it was, it was a twenty percent improvement on those, on those students that were not proficient in that. So the numbers we've got there, let's just, for example, the uh, fourth grade uh, E L A percentage, the proficiency is around numbers fifty-five percent. So forty-five percent of our students weren't proficient. And so we wanna improve twenty percent of those kids. If I, and if it's a hundred, so twenty percent of forty-five.
Yeah, so just like another column of what it would be.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can definitely do that.
Andrew, you're correct.
Okay, I just, I just wanna make sure that we quantify it above and beyond that so that it's, that it truly is crystal clear to everybody. And I get that, I think we've got kids coming and going right at the semester. We have more kids open enroll, I think, a few so that, I don't know if that changes these numbers or it doesn't, but.
Yeah, I mean, even with the district dashboard, Andrew, we're writing it for students that we have a full academic year on. Cause that's how the state of Wisconsin gives their proficiency. So if a kid comes into a district in December, they are not added to that year's data on their website because they are not here a full academic year.
Okay.
So students that start new this year do.
Yeah.
But uh, no, actually, students that start here new in September don't even count towards our proficiency rates in spring. Cause they're not here a full academic year. So it's always a little laggy on the data and I actually noted that on a draft of our district dashboard, just so everyone's clear that how. Because if you remember, that's why some of our percentages were wrong with what hit the um, Wise dash public data. And what our proficiency rates were, were a little off because they will report things full academic year. Why districts, we get percentages that you can run with or without full academic year.
So am I understanding this correctly, correctly, that we're saying our goal is to grow? Well, first off, I struggle even with narrowing down who we're gonna grow, because our job is to grow everyone. And so are we saying our focus is just to grow the people that weren't proficient?
So that's again, like not having any goal plan. This is where we are. Why Maria has a new district dashboard that is addressing what you're talking about, Katie. We're how are we tracking all kids growing? And of course, we're doing that internally in the map. And we just wanna put that somewhere where we're tracking that for the future. This is like a goal that is just a little baby trying to go for the first time, goal set for the first time. But we're looking like in the dip plan, they have a district data dashboard that is a multiple year tracking and growth goal.
Cause I just don't want us to fall into the trap of almost like teaching to the test.
Yes, for sure.
And we could be skewing numbers, which they look like we're being successful, but we're only teaching to what our desired outcomes.
Yeah. I I agree. That's why I like, not saying this is all good. It's just having, going from having nothing to something with our stuff that we had early in August when we worked on this. To now that Maria's been here and we're able to know things a little better and work with our administrators and Ron to have more robust.
And part of the problem has been various community and board conversations around improving our scores. You know, so that we look better and compare better to the other figure schools and all that stuff. Right, and that's to your point, but.
You want us to roll off kids.
That isn't necessarily the, I mean, I guess a debate, but that's not necessarily the best thing to do.
Yeah.
Hope we grow all kids, that will happen.
Yeah.
I think that would be a result of good instructions.
Yeah.
Correct, yes.
Correct. Yes, but just, uh, just focusing on the.
Right.
The forty-five percent or whatever, or just focusing on trying to improve the state test scores or whatever, like.
Right.
Those things are useful, but it needs to be context.
No, so our district data dashboard theoretically will measure both, right? Like how we're doing and what we increase this, we should see it here and vice versa. Yeah. And trust me, that's what we're busy trying to come back. So actually, a chunk of our February student achievement committee will need to discuss the district data dashboard that we'd like to track for the next couple of years over time. Like what are indicators? And having it aligned to our strategic plan, because I'm also gonna be really honest, we don't wanna care about the whole kid. I know that that's in your strategic plan, so we better be able to identify that in the district dashboard too. So we wanna make sure we're not just focusing on achievement. Of course, we want to, but we also wanna focus on other things that our community identifies and values. Well, these are good questions. Um, okay, if there's nothing more about our district kind of dip plan, the principals have their little portion. And, um, they're gonna update the board a little bit on their instructional day schedule. On some of the, um, updates and revisions that we're looking for for next school year. So I think that will start, cause she's primary, bold and moving.
So just in there, it's just bold and some work that we've done, whether it's internally within the leadership team, but then also in our building leadership teams. And then our entire staff getting feedback, you know, towards students, maybe towards our staff. In there, it's linked about what are some of the big rocks that will happen in the primary schedule. We know that uninterrupted blocks of learning time are important. You can see there, it says five K in fourth grade for many of this. And then this four K's got some nuances because that's only a half day. So they don't necessarily follow, but do know all of these things, our components. I've been working with Cara Borger and Cecil Rice around some of the changes that we'll see to five K and how they integrate literacy at a developmentally appropriate. Way within a four K center as well. So there's some things that we can ask well there. And turning, you know, still focusing on what we know we want with science, that play and this type of experience. So you can see social, emotional, there's those twenty-five minutes. We've identified how much time is needed for math, reading, language arts. Really making sure our language studies there, that might be seen moved here into the schedule when children or others talk to you about that. For decently called language studies. Right now, we kind of isolated specifics, like we're doing word work here or sand day. Or we might be doing snap words in some, um, in some grade levels. Really have all those back from language stu- studies and allows for some more fluidity throughout the day. And they, again, larger chunks of time. So you can see that. And then the other one would be around writing, you can see forty to forty-five minutes. And then again, science and social studies, five K through fourth. The work that Maria's doing with the team is five K typically or traditionally in the district has not had a social studies. So our curriculum that is there, so we'll be seeing that be developed over the next year, so we should be listening to that. Um, you can see there's some special times in there. We still continue with recommend if you do write three times a week, ninety minutes total for PE. An hour for, um, art, maker space, music, fully. And then libraries and check out more can put very minutes. We put in a waterfall schedule, which really makes it allow for us to be able to come back and do some differentiation. So we know that students that struggle, let's say in reading or need some type of an intervention. We need to have time to put that into a schedule that's natural without disrupting the entire schedule for the entire grade level. So we'll look at doing that. One is we prioritize reading is a waterfall, meaning that. No other time during the other grade, intergrade levels are not teaching reading at the same time. So our special teachers, our interventionists, we can all communicate and support within the department, give them that time that they needed within the reading block. But then also for science and social studies, the same thing, those are not overlapping at all to allow for if we need to prioritize that time for students that really struggle and need. More, um, more support in reading and writing or have different goals, that's where we will go. So that's important to see that, that's why.
That wasn't necessary for math then.
Math, we are able, since math has a larger function of the time and also because of the structure of our current resource and curriculum that we're using. We are able to differentiate.
Probably to match up sometimes for accelerated math kids.
Right, just like this year. So just like we have to have third, fourth, fifth. Interline, so we gotta continue that, but accelerate a piece of that. Um, and that's when there is overlapping in that, but otherwise, try not to. Um, there's also something to put in there, multidisciplinary, just a title given to many, never did a handwriting, cursive, typing. It's really multidisciplinary type, um, that's in, in the schedule that we'll hear. And then again, recesses, we always continue with two recesses per grade level. They're like the big rocks that go into the schedule.
Maybe you said this and I wasn't paying close attention, maybe. How did, how did you arrive at these numbers? Do you think Maria came up with it? Was it a team? Great little recommendation or like?
So team recommendations from DPIX. First of all, that's what we are looking at, like what does DPIX recommend? We also look at what does our current curriculum and what it offers that, the resources that we use. So for example, math, some resources would say sixty minutes. We have some other things put into our curriculum that would be a little bit longer. So and then Maria and I obviously we met and also talked about our times and where chunks of times that we really need to. Make sure that we are giving a really robust academic.
And your building leadership team.
Yeah, the building leadership team. And then we also brought in that whole process goes also to the whole building. So first I led that, where we need to vote, tell them what are your, what are your priorities for students, for staff? Vote. And then we did, the building leadership team led that for our entire staff. The same type of process, we did some feedback and data that we later analyzed and teased out, put some numbers into it, so.
She has big sticker posters for that too. Yeah, I mean, we, we included both building leadership teams in the scheduling process to get feedback. So we knew that, you know, they, they understood. And we also had them do a lot of research and learning about what, what was best, how, the best type of schedules.
That's something I think was a change with the staff over the last, that same process that was last year was, um. Just kind of moving more from like the, we've already cleaned some of that up, the knitting, the ready of like specific times. Where do you do transitions? Do you need a fifteen-minute recession, you need level twenty, all those things? To more of, of, more about your practice and pedagogy that people have different, there was a shift in belief. And I think that comes from the research and the learning that has happened. So it was nice to see that from staff as well. Like a lot of their, what we must have are not really specific to a schedule. Yes, the schedule promotes it. But really what's happening internally during the time, like we need differentiation, we need blocks of time. Um, resources that are, um, resources that are high leverage, stuff like that can help more rather than we need sixty minutes for. Recession. Well, it was beautiful today.
It was a nice day and day for recess. Good recess day today.
Yes.
Tomorrow might even be better. And then.
And then also just know, uh, Maria, Ron, Jay and I, we need Monday. Sometimes Laura joins us as well. And we just, we're trying to align ourselves and look at what we're each doing and then see what can fit.
Cause we don't wanna create schedules in isolation that won't work with shared staffing. Questions for primary?
Alrighty, it's my turn. Um, so many of the things that Beck has mentioned in terms of how we put our schedule together, BLT, uh, we had staff meeting about it. People giving us suggestions and thoughts and their wish lists of all the things that they'd like to do. But one of the things we, we've recognized is the transition from the primary school to the intermediate school. We need to be better with that in terms of what the schedule happens to look like. So we're looking at more of a traditional house schedule. So for example, um, uh, a, a student coming from fifth grade would not have four different teachers. They would have two different teachers. So a math and language, math and, uh, social studies teacher and a language arts and science teacher. Those, that would be one house, then the other house would have the other two teachers, so that there's fewer transitions that occur. Uh, language arts and math blocks, about ninety minutes. Science and social studies, about forty minutes a day. Adding a, a homeroom that we find is really important for our fifth graders to help with some organizational sorts of things. Cause it's the first time they're getting into a locker. And sometimes if you've been in the fifth grade hallway, you've seen lockers that don't necessarily close. Or they do close, but it's because somebody's holding on them for an awful long time. Um, and then some of the, you know, organizational things for an assignment notebook and what that would look like. And also being able to possibly have some small group and intervention time during that as well. And maybe even adding some of our second step SCL stuff into that homeroom time. Um, fewer elective offerings, so having an exploratory wheel. And we're still working through what's going to be involved in that wheel for our fifth graders. Band and choir still being, uh, required, uh, and then being opposite FIAD instead of the exploratory wheel. Because we wanna try and get to quarter-long explorer classes instead of trimester explorer classes. So we're still trying to, trying to figure out exactly what those explorers are going to be, but STEAM will definitely be one of them. And then having an elective, uh, the elective and the explorer class are gonna be about forty minutes, so still allowing students some choice into what they wanna have. But not as much choice as what we had this year where they were picking eight electives. That became, I think, maybe a little daunting for fifth graders and families to try and figure out all of those different parts and pieces there. So they'll have fewer classes, language arts and math in particular are gonna be longer. Maria and Ron and I have been, um, pounding along on schedule. In fact, we have another meeting set up to try and, we have a basic framework put in place. And now trying to get all the parts and pieces in the right place, um, for sixth, seventh, and eighth is, is what we're looking at. So fifth grade is more traditional house, so it's, it's kind of looks like primary school, but not exactly. So there's fewer teachers that the students have to really have, um, have to get to know because I think that's gonna help with some of the transition.
Maybe I'm, I'm mostly, most likely wrong. Didn't we just recently change to try and get the fifth grade to be more like content specialist as opposed to?
That's what they currently are right now. Each one of our teachers, um, we have a math and, uh, social studies teacher, we have two of those. That's what Heidi and Dan do right now.
Yeah.
And Sarah and, um, yep, Janine, Sarah and Janine, thank you. Sarah and Janine are, sorry, Janine, I really knew your name, it just didn't come out. Sarah and Janine, um, are language arts and science. So they're focusing on just those two content areas. Last year, when we had that, that other schedule. There was one teacher for language arts, there was one teacher for math, there was one teacher for. But the way that the schedule is being put together, it'd be really difficult to have that work out because the math. And language arts time is gonna be longer than the science and social studies time, so there, it becomes.
Well, and the, the. Teacher teaching to subject historically has been more common in recent years at least.
Alright. Yes, sir.
Next question, assignment notebook. Fifth grade does assignment notebook and it's a big deal.
Yep.
It's part of their day. And then it's never talked about again.
Sixth, seventh, and eighth grade all have this online assignment notebooks that are shared with the kids every single day.
Yeah, yeah, but the, the kids don't have to do anything. Like in fifth grade, like the whole point is you have your notebook and you write down your things and you're responsible for it. And then in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, it's just a resource that they get to consume. Which kind of defeats the purpose of trying to teach them to be responsible for themselves in the first place, in my opinion. Uh, I guess I don't know what I'm all about, but it seems like if we're gonna have, if we're gonna try and encourage them to be responsible for their own stuff. Then we should continue that instead of saying, yep, you're responsible for this. And then the next year, oh, now we're new for it. Like that seems like, I don't know, that's, that's weird.
I guess the team that we are seeing happen in the schedule, in terms of schedule.
Well, no, Jay just mentioned assignment notebook.
Right.
Yeah. You're talking about fifth grade.
Fifth grade, that's, that's emailed out every single day. And sixth, seventh, eighth grades is a document that started at the beginning of the quarter.
Yeah.
And then the teachers fill that out. I actually use it because I check students out at the end of the day to make sure they have all the stuff that they're supposed to have. And they literally have to show me everything that they have. So it, it's a tool for me. I'm sure it's a tool for a lot of parents who have their.
Oh, I agree. I just.
And there are some kids that do write it down.
I think it's the independence.
Yeah, the independence.
It's just so weird, like, we're trying to, yeah, exactly.
We gain independence, you have to keep your own assignment notebook. We're gonna make sure it's really good. And then we kind of take away that independence, um, I'm hearing you fill. Like in the older grades, cause teachers are taking on a responsibility for that more than kids.
Fill out the thing. And it's great to have it, right? It's super helpful as a parent that you can go look and say, oh, no, you need to be doing this.
Or the guy checking kids out.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah.
I think we can definitely talk about.
And then just, it's always a little weird, like.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can talk about that. Um, then when you look at the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade schedules, they are, um, they're relatively similar. Not, they're dissimilar from the fifth grade, so sixth, seventh, and eighth grade would be very similar. Um, eighty-three minutes for language arts and ma- and math, that's a block. And then all of the other classes, science, social studies, Spanish. The science and social studies, which are daily are forty minutes, Spanish and FIAD every other day for forty minutes, explore. The explorer classes will be forty minutes and the electives will be forty minutes. We're still, we're, we have a, we have a basic framework set up for what it's gonna look like. But Ron and Maria and I are trying to get things organized in such a way that we can then start to talk about how we staff it. Because will there be, will we have to maybe hire more staff for us to work out the schedule? Or do we allocate staff in a different way? Those are all things that we're still trying to work through there. Um, and then I just added at the bottom what our, um, in, in, incoming projected enrollment happens to be, just so you can see that, you know, our. We're in the low eighties for fifth and sixth grade and the upper nineties, mid to upper nineties for, for seventh and eighth grade. So when you're looking at that, those classes obviously have more students in them in seventh and eighth grade than they do in fifth and sixth grade. So we've had a lot of conversation and Maria and, and Ron and I have gone back and forth. And we're looking for a meeting with him in person later this week, so that we can kind of get everything on a, on a board and get, get some, get some things taken care of that way.
How do we address studying? Cause I know we've got. Teaching and time allocated for subject and content. And it's delivered and then tested. But, and so whether this is conversations with other parents that have students going into high school and anxieties are starting to bubble up. Can't believe my kids are going to high school. I don't feel like they know how to study. And then when I start looking back at my seventh and eighth grader and just doing work with them. I don't see this like systematic foundational way of knowing how to study that's been. Taught along with the content. So it could well just be my kids. Maybe they're, it is being taught and they're just not. Whatever. And I was just wondering what level of intent.
Well, and that, I, I mean, along with that, when does that normally get taught? Maybe no, maybe that's never taught grade, never. Maybe that's not normally taught grade school. I mean, I don't know who you were talking with, it could be that program or whatever, but.
No, I just.
Go along with the question.
Yeah, I specifically remember like third, fourth, fifth grade. Just long time, like teachers going through exactly what outlining points is, what this looks like and how to review. And then it kept getting reinforced with every grade level. And I don't, and again, this isn't. This is more just by ignorance, not knowing how that fits in or if it does at all. Um, but that's a, it's just like, it's a life skill you need that I took for granted that my kids knew how to do it. And they're like, well, just go study. And I kind of give them like stare.
Yeah.
Because it's, it's a practice, like you, it's a practice.
Like, I didn't pick a room.
So I just.
Um, I, I think that's a really good conversation, Katie. It has to do with the schedule, but not really, right? It's kind of like how are we teaching study skills and habits systemically? Um, to ensure that kids have, you know, some of that, those good habits going into high school. And I actually think it's kind of a good transition to like what our last agenda item today is. That's part of the work of that ACP committee that we're starting second semester now that Jackie's back. And a lot of the conversations, um, Jackie and I have had, I've attended all the counselor transition meetings at Arrowhead. When Jackie has, so I can kind of learn what, what they're communicating to our counselors. And then Jackie and I, um, and our ACP planning committee really wanna talk about, you know, that transition. And then how does that impact all of those things? Does it need to go into a more systemic class that we're teaching to all students? You know, um, to give them some great study habits and study skills. So they understand how we use it when they get to Arrowhead. Cause we are getting feedback that that's, you know. And not that we just take it cause Arrowhead says, but you know, we, we do want to look at what we're currently doing. So that will be part of our process now second semester. But the board won't get that work until like May because we're just starting, starting now that Jackie's back here now in February. But it's really, it's, it's that same thing. It's, you know, it's all around, you know, kids' passionate area. And what kind of electives and offerings that we have. And then at the same time, the. And then at the same time, the skill set that they need. Because we only control part of that transition, right?
Right, and it wasn't even so much just to like narrow down on the transition. Um, because I think it's just an important life skill. Even at high school, you're.
I think it appears what Phil, you were saying to about the assignment notebook as well. These are the habits that we want our kids to have and develop, like.
But well, I just.
To do it, but maybe like this is the thing, I don't care that over.
But A C P plan, remember, isn't just about transition. It's actually what we do starting in our, in grade six, seven and eight here. So that's, that's when the state has a starting process. So how can we be better at that? So they're not just ready at Arrowhead, that they have all of those skills that we want them to have. Because that really is a career in college readiness skill. I mean, I hate the word college because it makes it seem like we're pushing kids to like college. But it's, you know, investigating your passions, what are some things that you like and enjoy? What are you learning about yourself as a person and a learner? And how can you use that information to help, help you grow?
Right, yeah, because I, I know like college is tied out to that and that can turn some people off, because they're like, my kid's not going there. But it's also trying to structure and support and organize.
Yeah.
And anytime you can do that and be logically organized, you're going to be more confident or capable in whatever.
Yeah. I'm saying we are thinking about those things, that's, that's just the place we have it. Is there any more questions on that?
Yeah, the twenty minutes in the fifth grade, uh, from home room. I love that idea, so are they going to be able to talk to teachers if they have problems? So they can, it doesn't have to be their home room teacher, they'll be able to. Plug to teacher.
We have to work through what that's going to look like, but there'll be, all those teachers will all have the same time together. So if I need to go see Mrs. Casper's for something, there should be a sign out that allows me to go get extra help from Mrs. Casper's or whoever the teacher asked to do.
Any other questions on Jake's schedule? I have a big rocks. There's a lot of work behind these one page novels. Um, so last is just kind of give the board a little update of where we are in our A C P planning. So of course we haven't started that because one of our big team members is a twenty year new baby. So, um, you know, we're really get heavy into that in the next, um. Couple months, and with that, we're also looking at kind of, uh, kind of scope and sequence for our electives. So if you see E cubed up here or E squared, that's just Maria's bad sense of humor, because I have to name everything. Um, uh, the three Es mean exploratory. Um, a wheel where there's four classes that all kids will explore. A traditional elective wheel means kids decide what to take in there. And then an encore wheel, um, that's the E cubed, get it? Bad national, um, the encore wheel kind of means like, um, required courses by state law. So for example, F I A D's required, right? So that's every other day. We have music requirements all the way through up sixth grade. So, um, the encore kind of means like, those are classes all kids will take. And they're just, for scheduling wise, we have three periods that they're either in grade six, eight, where they'll take an elective and encore and exploratory. And in fifth grade, they'll take, um, two out of the three to help with transitions. So that's kind of what we'll be looking at as part of this process to A C P plan. And working with those core teachers to help identify, um, a scope and sequence that works well for their programs. Any questions on that? In the last four minutes and I wasn't done early. But I did, I don't know if I have questions. There's not much to update, I just want the board to know, we're not forgetting about this, it's just timing, you've got a plan. And I'm excited, I'm excited about all this stuff. And with that, we'll be some working with Arrowhead. Um, because we don't want to repeat activities and things, because there's software that the state provides for A C P planning council. And we don't want to replicate anything that Arrowhead requires all kids to do, so our kids aren't afforded. Well, you guys have like a whole three minutes to take a break before you board.
Well, the mood is warm to order. And it's an opportunity for our Moody to talk to the board. If you get anything online, let us know, Ron. Is there anything that, uh, we're going to, I mean, do you remember what I was going to address the board?
One thing I'd just like to say, that Arrowhead High School tonight is doing their actual first board forum, kind of like we're doing right now. So that's thanks to you guys and you guys on High School Board to actually.
Give it a try.
Give it a try, so that's at seven o'clock, if anybody wants to go see that. See how that is.
I know.
Yeah. So that's, that's thanks, uh, this morning for doing what you're doing, so.
Let me just turn our mics on. Yeah. Well, I think that nobody wants to engage with us, you have that, you're on online, right?
Correct, nothing online.
We are going to move into the regular monthly meeting here. I'm going to call that a word, we start with the pledge of allegiance.
Let me just, in a way, the United States of America and to the Republic of North America. One nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
So this meeting is withdrawn to all the known reporting places. Ready to move to the.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
A second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Please let's say aye. Aye, both say aye. Motion's carried. We're out to approve the minutes, we have two, an open session and a closed session on Monday, December twentieth.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of Monday, December twentieth, six fifteen, open session, and December twentieth, seventeen, closed session.
Here we have a motion and a second, is there any corrections, additions? During the night, all the favors say aye.
Aye.
Both say aye. Motion's carried. We're out to the approval of the financial report bill listing.
Sure, uh, I'll make a motion to approve voucher listing dated December eleventh, twenty twenty-one for January twentieth, twenty twenty-two. Payroll check number five five three eight zero seven. Uh, for an amount of one hundred and eighty dollars fifty-seven cents. Check number five five eight oh eight, the amount of three hundred and eighty-seven dollars. Direct deposit number nine zero 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 five five eight two three through nine zero 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 five five nine three seven. The amount of one hundred and fifty-nine thousand two hundred and fifty-one dollars and twenty-eight cents. Direct deposit number nine zero 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 five five nine three eight through nine zero 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 five six zero four five. In the amount of one hundred and forty-four thousand two hundred and one dollars and twenty-one cents. Direct deposit number nine zero 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 five six zero four six through nine zero 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 five six one five nine. In the amount of one hundred and sixty thousand eighty-four dollars and seventy-eight cents. Uh, wire transfer, uh, numbers two zero two one zero zero one seven four through two zero two one zero zero two one five. In the amount of three hundred and seventy-one thousand two hundred and thirty-nine dollars and fifty cents. For total payroll, eight hundred and thirty-five thousand three hundred and fifty-two dollars and thirty-four cents. Accounts payable, check number five five zero four nine through five five one zero zero. In the amount of two hundred and eighty-eight thousand, two hundred and fifty-eight dollars and seventy cents. And just to note, check number five four eight six eight was voided and reissued. It came by your transfer two zero two one zero zero one seven two through two zero two one zero zero one seven three. In the amount of eight hundred and eight dollars and twenty-eight cents. Uh, wire two zero two one zero zero one nine one through two zero two one zero zero one nine three. In the amount of three thousand five hundred and fifty-one dollars and one cent. Uh, wire number two zero two one zero zero two oh four through two zero two one zero zero two oh five, you know, nine hundred and thirty-four dollars and forty-four cents. Credit card transaction one two two zero two one, in the amount of thirty-eight thousand eight hundred and eighty-six dollars and ninety-one cents. I A C H direct deposit number two one two two zero 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 six zero through two one two two zero 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 seven three. In the amount of one thousand one hundred and four dollars and seventy-nine cents. For total accounts payable of three hundred and thirty-three dollar, three hundred and thirty-three thousand five hundred and fifty-two dollars and five cents. Total disbursements of one million one hundred and sixty-eight thousand nine hundred and four dollars and thirty-nine cents.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the financial or the bill listing, or any questions you need answered? And all the favors say aye.
Aye.
Aye, both say aye. Motion's carried. Okay. Jennifer's not here and she, she didn't have to sign up. Anybody want to address the board? In delegations, we heard. Okay, we're moving past that. We are going to. And there were no donations?
No donations, we do have a couple personnel actions I'd like to bring to the board. Um, for our packet, we've got a letter of resignation by Jim Hannan, uh, our custodian, who has been with us for twenty-five years. We will highlight him in a little bit. Um, you'll see three, uh, letters of appointment, uh, for, uh, one for a new custodial, uh, which is Eric Stevens to replace, uh, Mr. Hannan. And then, uh, kind of as a market adjustment, bringing forward Kirk Schmidt and Jordan Zircher, uh, additional, uh, dollar amount for their letter of appointment for the rest of this year. As a market adjustment for those gentlemen working in our custodial area. Um, and then finally, we do have a teacher contract that we would like to bring forward, uh, Mr. John Ryan, who has been with the district prior. Uh, he retired with us right around the twenty fifteen school year. Uh, the reason for the opening is we have moved, uh, A J Stutter into a intervention position at Burton Primary School. And then to cover his science classes would be to, uh, would be Mr. Ryan to cover those, uh, the rest of this year. So again, just looking for the board to approve, uh, Jim Hannan's letter of resignation. And then, uh, letters of appointment for Eric Stevens, Jordan Zircher, and Kirk Schmidt as presented, as well as the individual teacher contract for John Ryan as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the resignation of Jim Hannan.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? And.
It's a lot of years, a lot of years, it's impressive.
Friendly face. And all the favors say aye.
Aye.
Both say aye. Motion's carried.
I'll make a motion for the letters of appointment of Eric Stevens, Kirk Schmidt and Jordan Zircher.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for the letters of appointment, are there any questions, discussion? All the favors then say aye.
Aye.
Both say aye. Motion's carried.
I'll make a motion to approve John Ryan's individual teaching contract presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve John Ryan's teaching contract. Is there any questions? Comments? All the favors then say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both say aye. Motion's carried. Information?
Okay, uh, no, we're good, we just would like to go and, uh, is Mr. Hannan in the audience tonight?
No, he's not.
He's not, well, I did invite him, he is aware that we are, uh, we'd like to recognize him publicly. Um, Jay, if you could take it over from here and talk a little bit about, uh, Jim as, uh, as a man and as an employee. But also at the same time, kind of talk a little bit about how the district honored him.
Yeah, so, um, I've known Mr. Hannan since I was in seventh grade. I used to open up the gym in Waukesha and I'd play basketball with my high school buddies. Mr. Hannan, we called him Toad. Um, that's his nickname, that's his email, it's toadman at gmail dot com if you want to get ahold of him. Anyways, um, he was always here for our kids, always here for our staff. Um, he'd open up the doors early, stay late, I mean, you can find him setting up for concerts, setting up for conferences. The next day you walk in, it's like nothing had happened the night before. Um, always there for the kids, the kids loved him, our staff loved him. Uh, there was a really nice luncheon that they had for him on the Thursday before his final day. Um, and just honored him and he broke down in tears, I'm surprised I'm not crying right now. Um, he had a, he's had a huge impact on so many of our kids. And he's what an educator really is. I mean, I know he's, he's a custodian by, by title, but he's truly an educator because he connected with kids. They respected him, he would get kids out of class to help them set up and tear down and all different sorts of things. So everybody's got their own Mr. Hannan story, but we just can't thank him enough for the twenty-five years he gave to Burton. So Jim, thank you very much, my friend. We might be officiating, we might have picked up a whistle to officiate, you never know, this is a basketball game, one hundred counts.
He might have, so Jay, that's for sharing, really appreciate that.
You're welcome, Bill.
Thank you.
Okay, we're on to, uh, committee reports, we have the student achievement committee. Is there anything we need to go any further with that? It was, it was online, right?
Yep.
Correct.
Okay, let's go over to the finance committee.
Finance committee, that last week on Wednesday, we discussed the agenda items listed. Um, revenue and expenses, we reviewed the year to date so far, so July through December, our revenues are slightly higher. Part of that is because we have field trips this year, we have footwear this year. Some of those things, but those are also offset by their course funding expenses. Um, but we also did receive a hundred and four thousand dollars additional as part of the government discretionary funding. Um, and we received that in early December.
Except for clarification, that wasn't part of our budget planning for the year, so to some degree, that's a little bit of home money.
Yes, absolutely, yes, that was an additional, that was not a start to that. Um, and then our expenses are slightly higher as well, part of that is due to the remodel. We've got about a hundred and ninety thousand dollars that can be, um, contributed directly to the remodel. And we also did, um, new computer servers this year, which was about a hundred thousand. We had the art room for fifty thousand dollars over summer. Um, and we have a few additional staff members as well, so the salary benefit, um, expense portion is slightly higher. But overall, nothing concerning, nothing unusual. These are all things that we knew about, had planned for, um, and kind of could predict to see. So nothing, nothing alarming, which is good. Um, we did conduct second party count as dictated by T P I, so that was how, we did see an increase in students from September. We actually gained six students. Um, and I kind of expect that trying to continue just for this year, back with all the construction going on, those houses being finished. Um, families moving into the area, which is great for our district. The budget calendar is attached there, just to give you kind of an idea of the budget, you can make your own process. And then a little bit more detail about what goes on in each month related to the budget. We had C P I finalized, C P I given at four point seven this year, so that's going to be what we'll use for bartering purposes. And then I have a, an S R update, so S R three, our state plan was rejected by the U S Department of Education. And then I have a, an S R update. So S R three, our state plan was rejected by the U S Department of Education. Earlier in January. So it came back to the state, the state made some changes, send it back. Right now, it's currently in like a fourteen day review period. So if that goes through without, you know, any comments or objections or changes, then this plan that is on the table will go, it will take effect. If that's the case, um, Martin would receive a grand total of five hundred and seventy two thousand dollars for S R three, just S R three. S R two is separate. Um, and so our guaranteed title allocation is two hundred and seventy. So with this plan, if that were to go through, it would be about three hundred and two thousand dollars additional. Of that additional money, I think ninety three or ninety four thousand was based on our hours of in-person instruction. So because we're here teaching in person, we then have that almost one hundred thousand dollars. Um, and then the remainder of that money would be part of just the regular state plan that. They want each district to receive five hundred and seventy eight dollars per people. So um, I think the fourteen day review period, it's up either late this week or early, early next week. So we should have answers on that relatively quick. If no one has any changes, this is the plan we're going with. And we would get uh, five hundred and seventy two thousand dollars. That was finance.
And S R three is the one that has the strings attached to it.
Correct. Yes, the twenty percent to the um, dedicated towards learning loss and.
At a minimum.
Yes, at a minimum, which we will reach. We will have no trouble. Yeah. We'll make sure we're covered there.
And what are the S R two situations?
S R two is a lot more wide open.
Okay.
Yeah. So, but I mean, if we, if we're able to receive up in salaries, that'll just really help us be able to bring in interventionists and additional staff. That can really help our kids get that on track.
The other question? Okay, we're on to reports and updates. Do we have principals reports?
A principal report was half, was occurred during the student achievement debate.
Okay. Okay, then we're on to new business. We have the open enrollment seat allocation.
Actually, we switched that around. Dean, we're going to talk open mitigation first.
Okay, I asked you whether we changed it.
Sorry, but I didn't know what uh, what version of each other. I didn't know, I just wanted to honor people's time. Uh, typically, people wanted to come and talk about mitigation or listen to mitigation. That's why I moved that to the front of the new business.
Okay. Okay, so we've got uh. Discussion on open mitigation.
So just wanted to bring this back from our December conversation. Um, and we have come out of the uh, the, the holiday break here in January. And uh, things are, I don't want to say back to the beginning of the year. But for the intermediate school, we've been averaging only about eight cases per week and the primary school, four cases per week. Um, as we come out of the uh, the uh, the spike that we saw before at Burton Primary School. So um, just wanted to see if uh, again, per uh, the agenda items, to see if there was any discussion around changing any mitigation protocols or procedures.
I don't have any requested changes or anything at all.
No desire to change.
Okay. Sounds good to me.
Lindsay wants to speak.
Oh, no, I'm fine. I'm just saying. We already got three, so.
Yeah.
Okay. So then you want to do the dean then next?
Yeah, we'll go to the COVID uh, isolation quarantine changes. So um, I just wanted to bring forward, uh, the T E T, as we're all aware, has changed their isolation recommendations. Um, to uh, five days and then a mask. Um, after that for days six through ten. Um, again, just in kind of, in response to that, the administration is recommending that uh, we offer two options for families. Uh, if uh, if they wish, and one would be to stay home for the five days, as followed by five days of masking. Uh, assuming symptoms are improving and uh, fever is held down without fever reducing medicine. The other option would be you home for just ten days like we have in the past since the pandemic. Uh, move forward here in March of twenty. So. Um, and then the other piece is surrounding the staff. Um, again, our administration is just recommending that staff return after five days. Again, assuming their fever is good and symptoms are improving after five days, followed by five days of mask wearing. Uh, to get our staff back uh, into a school and working with our kids. So um, I just wanted to uh, get the feel for the board and uh, if we can change our COVID isolation policy.
I support um, for both staff and students, the ability, of course, assuming that you're symptom free. Um, to return after five days. I'm not.
That's not what the recommendation was, but continue.
Well, he threw out three different recommendations, so.
Sure.
I'm.
I just wanted to.
Yeah. Um, not comfortable going any further with regards to mask, the staff or students, other than a recommendation.
I agree on that. We would highly recommend it, but it's still a choice.
So you're suggesting they have to be gone for five days and then come back?
If they're well, assuming they're well, symptom free.
Okay, so you're saying symptom free and the recommendation was five days, no fever and symptoms are improving, which is not symptom free.
Oh, the symptoms.
It would be symptoms improving. Alright, that's what the D E D recommended.
Right? You can still be coughing up a lung and you're better, but.
You're better, but you still have residual. Yeah, I agree. Fair point.
Well, we should put a motion out there and then can be going over now.
I'd like a motion to approve the administration recommendation as presented.
Well, since there is three.
Well, there's three different situations, right?
Correct. Yes, for the isolation.
Oh. For families, they have options, two options. A student could stay at home for five days and return to the school if their fever free for twenty four hours. Uh, without medication and symptoms are improving. Then wear a mask for five days while school. Or a student could stay at home for ten days and then return to school and not have. There would be a requirement to wear a mask. And for staff, the recommendation would be to stay home for five days and then they would be able to return to school. If their fever free for twenty four hours without medication and their symptom improved. In which case they will wear a mask for five days at school.
There are a lot of options there. Is there a second?
Cool. Someone else make a recommendation then?
Okay, the motion now is to the mark. Second. We have a new motion.
I make a motion that. I'm not behind, or I'm not saying that I'm against what Ron or administration presented. Um. I'm just not comfortable. What are your word required with masks versus recommended? And so that would be my amendment to the motion.
Everybody understand changes Katie's act. I will make the second to get it on the floor. Is there a discussion?
The only thing I'm looking at is that we don't give the option to our staff members to have this ten days. Is that correct? So they can't do quarantine ten days?
Correct. Our, our recommendation would be for as soon as staff are well, are, are well enough to come to school after that five days. Given symptoms improving and fever free without medication, um, and that they come to school. That's what we would really like them to do.
We would recommend.
We recommend they wear masks.
What is the? I guess what's driving the desire to change required to recommend?
I'm personally not comfortable with the language of requiring and I feel like. It. It contradicts what, what we've done for myself personally, opt for in the past. And so nobody's saying that you can't wear a mask. Anybody's welcome to. I'm just not going to require somebody to.
So then why would, okay.
Ron, when you guys looked at this, uh, and I'm gonna make a broad assumption here and I may be wrong on this. But uh, most of the kids are, uh, that do wear masks or uh, you know, wear masks on the, on the bus as directed by federal law. Those are cloth masks or. Uh, I guess gaiters, right? The thin elastic uh, mask type product. Uh, there, there's been uh, numerous reports. Um. That, you know, cloth masks uh, either don't work or are less effective than other types of masks. So when you guys put your recommendation together. Uh, knowing that most of our kids aren't wearing well-fitted. Uh. I guess N ninety five medical grade masks. How, how did you take that information over the last thirty days with the discussion of cloth masks? By various medical professionals in this recommendation?
Um, we truly haven't talked about the cloth mask versus the N ninety five mask. Uh, but this is just been, uh, our recommendation is coming from our work with the county. And uh, about the county's recommendation as well as the D E C saying uh, masking in days six, seven, eight, nine, and ten. Um, whether it be a cloth mask or an N ninety five would be some more protection for those around. Um, but uh, you aren't accurate, correct? I do not see a lot of N ninety five masks or surgical masks around. Uh, to start, to start off with your, your first observation, whether it be coming off the path of the bus and or in our school. So that recommendation truly came from what the county and the CDC uh, recommendation is.
Wasn't the CDC part of the people that decided cloth masks weren't effective?
I believe so.
Yes.
Not as effective as those N ninety fives for sure. Correct. But Andrew, to answer your question, we did not take into account the uh, effectiveness of a cloth mask.
Yeah. So is our direction then that we're effectively asserting? The risk of someone spreading COVID days six through ten is negligible. Right? By saying, we want everyone to come back, but you don't have to wear a mask. You're right, you don't have to do anything else, right? Because we're not doing distancing and other things or whatever other measures you could talk about. Effectively, we're, well, distancing is up to the principals and the administration. Sure, but it's not up to the students. So if a student, it's not up, it's not up to us. So in the context of where you're framing it, you're saying we as a board. That's not, I mean, we delegated that to, uh, I don't care. Do whatever you want.
Yes, we do, when we see a spike in classrooms or in what there, we do respond by increasing it.
Alright, all in favor?
We do have a motion at a second. Any more discussion? Would you like us to, to vote? So all in favor then say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All the same time.
Aye.
Motion is carried. Okay, we're on to the open enrollment seats.
Before we do that, Dean, if we could, uh, do we want to revisit the motion for virtual learning?
That didn't change.
If we want, we can keep it, uh, uh, again, with, with kids coming back for five days. Um, again, we can just keep doing when they come back. So if they are positive with COVID. They can add that virtual learning for one to two days. And then. And then come back to regular. We have been utilizing the ten day isolation period. Um, within the virtual learning platforms.
Well, Ron, if we make it, if you, if you would make a change, the uh. I mean, at the end of the day, you don't, each, each case is going to be different as far as if, if a child is. Symptom free or, 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 you know, doesn't have a fever at the end of that five days. So.
Symptom free is symptom improving.
Um. Symptom improving. So if you change it to five days only, you. You know, potentially if that child's case lasted longer. Is that what you're getting at?
No, I just mean that up to ten days instead of ten days.
I think we should leave it up to ten days if the family wants to keep it at home for the ten days and.
Right, and that's what we, we currently have that now. It is a ten day, once you're in, it's ten days. Um, again, we could, we could go with the spirit of it, so. We're fine.
Well, you're saying that right now it explicitly has to be ten days, if you wanted to change it to up to ten days.
Correct.
Sure, I'll make a motion that we change the virtual learning option to be requiring a positive COVID tests. And be up to ten days.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion at a second. Discussion? All in favor then say aye.
Aye.
All the same time, motion is carried.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, now we're going back to the open enrollment?
Open enrollment. So it is that time when uh, the D P I requires us to our seat assignments for next year. Um, when taking a look at our enrollment for next year. Um, we believe that, that we can continue to monitor enrollment with the district growth that we're seeing. For all students, for all grades, four K through eighth grade to be unlimited. Um, and then cross categorical though, our special education program for cross categorical education students. Um, is full right now, uh, particularly with the growth that we're seeing and some of the referrals that are coming across our desk. And then openly for speech-only I E Ps though, we, we feel that we can handle. All of the uh, speech-only I E Ps that come through our desk too as well. So uh, the administration is recommending the board make a motion to approve the twenty two, twenty, the open enrollment seat allocation as follows. And I just need somebody to read all of those in that, of the board.
I'll make a motion to approve the twenty twenty two, twenty three open enrollment seat allocations as follows. Four K unlimited, five K unlimited, first order unlimited, second unlimited, third unlimited, fourth unlimited, fifth unlimited, sixth unlimited, seventh unlimited, eighth unlimited, cross categorical special education. Zero speech only processes for.
Okay, we have a motion at a second. Any discussion? All in favor then say aye.
Aye.
All the same time, motion is carried.
Okay.
Okay, so now we are to. Use approval versus exterior signs?
Yep, yep. So uh, the district has been working with, uh, I'd say our administrative team has been working with the uh, P T O. And uh, one of the uh, reasons for some of the P T O fundraising this year was to uh, possibly purchase some new L E D signage. Outside of both buildings, uh, to continue to obtain information, to continue to push up information out to our community. As well as our parents and uh, to kind of replace the two thousand and ten. And again, they've been up there for about twelve years, uh, to replace the outdated. What I'd say is the signs to uh, a little bit more modern as well. P T O is pledging twenty thousand dollars, which would cover the cost of one sign. And uh, again, the district would take on the, the dollars for. And again, the district would take on the, the dollars for the other signs. So I guess, so the administration feels strongly that it's a, it's a good way to continue to communicate, continue to really highlight that we are a twenty-first century school. But again, it's a good partnership project with the P E O, and we're very fortunate to have that partnership with them. So the administration is recommending the board approve the purchase of two new signs for Burton Primary and Intermedia School, not two to be forty thousand dollars.
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of two signs for Burton Primary and Burton Intermedia Schools, not to receive forty thousand dollars.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Ron, did you say once either in the last board meeting or maybe it was in an email, these signs are like the ones over at, the one over at Richmond?
Correct, it's very similar to the one at Richmond.
Yeah, okay. I did drive past it one evening. Thought it looked good.
Yep, the difference with this one, Andrew, would be that the sign to get kind of further picture, the sign doesn't encapsulate the entire monument. But it actually, this one's a little bit sharper because it's a little bit smaller of a millimeter, but, but very similar.
Yeah. I, I think they have even pictures on theirs of like staff and stuff. So that's, that's cool.
Yep.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, all in favor then say aye.
Aye.
For the same time. Motion is carried. Okay, that completes our new business coming to upcoming meetings and agenda.
Yep, so the end of February, February twenty-eighth would be our monthly meeting. And prior to that would be the student achievement meeting coming in at five o'clock. Mark, we did set, given our spring break, so where is that? We did set March fourteenth to be that one. And then April twenty-fifth would be the one for Apriling, and that would be when the board would be organized.
Any requests for time changes or agenda? Hearing nothing? Any motion to hear?
I got a motion to return.
A second.
We motion a second on favor then say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.
Thanks, everybody. Appreciate it.